Call our meeting to order. First off, we will entertain any additions or deletions to the agenda if there are any, or motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion support. Any comments or questions? Last chance. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Rule, has it been taken?
I'm not saying.
It has been taken. Very good. Thank you. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone would please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much, and welcome everyone. Okay, next up, we entertain a motion for the approval of the September 24, 2024 regular meeting minutes of this body. We have a motion support. Any comments, questions, additions or deletions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. That motion is carried. Thank you. Move on down to hearings. First up, we are to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October 22, 2024, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows, which will consider an amended application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate from Amalana Taco Manufacturing for their south building expansion. Your pleasure.
We accept the hearing. Support.
Motion support. Any comments or questions? Eric, do you want to give a color?
Um, yeah, this is a, we bid one IFT on this building, but there was some additional costs that came in specifically on the electrical side of things, so they're going to bring that back and add that in, those additional costs to the IFT. So that's what will be the main focus of that.
Okay. Last chance for comments or questions. Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we accept the hearing. Thank you. Number two, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to consider an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. This is from Gemini Capital Management 9 LLC for the property at 311 East Superior Street. Your pleasure to open the hearing.
Moved to open the hearing.
Support.
Motion support. And the lead is you.
Yep, I'll take the lead. The building in question is 311 East Superior Street. That is...
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
There you go. All right. Any comments or questions before we vote? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yeah, yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried, and the hearing is open. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll hit the top of the high details for you, and the owner's here too if you have any questions for them. So, we're talking about 311 East Superior Street. That is the former Morning Sun Newspaper Building. We held the Oprah District Establishment Public Hearing back in March 26 of 2024, and now we're here with the exemption certificate because the project is basically going to get underway here hopefully the first of the year is what we're looking to do. The project includes nine apartments, six units on the second floor and three on the ground floor on the rear side of the building, a commercial space on the front side of the building. This is a total of 13,000 square feet. The project total, estimated build out at $2.9 million. And like I said, its start date, we're looking in the first part of the year in February and speaking completed by the end of the year of 2025. We did work with the zoning board of appeals on this project. There is a unit on the second floor just a little bit lower than our 700 square foot minimum, which is at 689, which we did do a variance for. And then on the ground floor, with our new ordinance, we do allow for the residential on the ground floor in the rear end of the building. But the way that building is built, the structural beams that go across there, we couldn't get it the 50/50, because only 50% of the building can be used for commercial. They were just over that at 53%. So, we did give them a variance on that too. So, a great project, a $2.9 million investment, and some more folks living in the downtown. What's also great about this particular project, and this is just me speaking, some else might not think that way, but this is the east side of the downtown. This is the first real good investment that we're going to have on this side. So, hopefully this will start to push things toward the center where we've had other investment in the downtown. So this is hopefully good things to come with projects on the east side there. So, that's all I have from staff.
Okay. Who has the first question? Everybody's familiar with it? Okay. No questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comments or have questions about this project? If you do, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know your concerns. Not seeing many people come forward, so I'll assume there's not going to be anyone at this point. Don't look like I'm moving. Okay. So we entertain a motion to close the public hearing if there's no comments.
Sold.
Support.
Got a motion support. Last chance for comments or questions. Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried, and the hearing is closed. Thank you. Next up, we would consider your resolution approving and authorizing the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Gemini Capital Management 9 LLC at 311 East Superior.
True proof.
Support. Motion support. Again, any comments or questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Hearing done. Motion is carried. We're good to go.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Good luck with this project. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
All right. Move on down to number three. We are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, for the purpose of reviewing special assessment districts number 2024-1, 2024-2, 2024-3, 2024-4, 2024-5, and 2024-6. This is for the construction of sanitary sewer leads on Pine, Charles, Richmond, Moyer, and Austin-South River combination, and Rosedale respectively. This is in conjunction with our SRF sanitary sewer improvement project.
Moved to open the hearing.
Support.
Hey, we have a motion support. Any comments or questions at this point? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried, and the hearing is open. Looks like Dave is taking the lead. Welcome, Dave.
Hello. First of all, my name is Dave Ringel. I'm the Public Services Director. I have a pretty good idea what brought everybody out here, so popular. Just one caveat of a change, this is not in conjunction with the SRF sanitary sewer improvement. This is in conjunction with our Neighborhood Street Reconstruction Program, as well as federal transit dollars that we're using towards Pine Avenue. So, two different funding mechanisms. With that caveat, what I'm going to do, start off presentation. Most of everything what I have to say, we'll go with every street. So, we're doing six of these tonight. So, if there's any questions or anything that I don't answer, I'm asking you until the end, because I may address those during the presentation, and I refer to the mayor because he's going to get my next question.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess just to clarify for everybody that's here, the way the agenda is constructed, and I believe we want to follow that, is we'll do all the hearings first, so everybody will have a chance to speak before we take any individual motions on any of the individual projects. So if anything comes up that makes us want to change or modify anything, all projects will get the same consideration. So, with that, Dave?
Yep. I'll defer to the mayor. Do you want me to do all of these at once, or go piecemeal through these?
I would prefer we do them all at once. I mean, definitely delineate when you stop one and start the other, so that people that might not be interested in certain sections can perk up their ears at the appropriate time, so.
Okay. Thank you. As I mentioned, I'm Dave Ringel, I'm the Public Services Director, and we're going to first start off with our SAD proposal number one, 2024. This is for Pine Avenue. As you can see, this is for the replacement of sanitary sewer from Washington up to Warwick Drive. That's not the full extent of the street construction, but that is the full extent of the sanitary sewer replacement. When I say sanitary sewer replacement, I'm talking about the public main. When I talk about laterals, what I'm talking about are the lines that go from your buildings or your residence to the main. So, when I'm using the term lateral for the cost cleanout, sanitary cleanout is what's going to be placed on sanitary lateral near the property line or at the point of connection for the new sanitary replaced sewer lateral to the existing sanitary sewer lateral. That's an access point to cleanout, and also delineate where the new sanitary sewer has been replaced. And the Y, that's the connection to the main. Pine Avenue is a little bit different than the rest of these, because that was bid out on state contracts, so we don't have apples to apples on that. But what I do have is a cleanout cost and a cost per lineal foot for the sanitary sewer. The Y is included in those costs. When I go through the next streets, you'll see a cost for all three. So, when I go through here, you may see some differences. I'm going to go right on to the next slide. It's not, I apologize. Thanks, Chris.
Can you switch it now?
Okay. What we have here is, actually, I'm going to go back. Go back to that last slide, Chris. There's just one thing...
Can you change it now?
Yeah. Go back to the one that shows...
You can do it.
Oh, can I change it? I'm sorry.
You can now.
Yep, I can change it. Thank you. Pine Avenue, the people that are here on Pine Avenue, you're going to notice there's different lengths of proposed pipe. The reason for that being is Pine Avenue has a sanitary sewer main that's kind of near the center of the street for the first two-thirds of that street. The north, one-third, that sanitary sewer main is on the east side near the property line. So, there's an estimated footage difference based on that, just because of where the sanitary sewer main is located. So, and I can address those questions as we go along. What we're going to do as a part of this street project is we're going to replace the street surface, the water main, and the sanitary sewer main, as well as the storm sewers where they need to be replaced. The cost, I can add anybody to this list. So, with the initial SAD that everybody's here for, I can add to that, but I cannot add to it once this is established tonight. So, I can take away. Now, the reason I can do that is how the special assessment system works. So, once this is established, I can't add anybody else to it. So if I find a rogue sanitary sewer line that comes across country, it connects to Pine Avenue, it's great news for the property owner, they get a free replaced sanitary lateral, but the problem is the city hasn't paid 100% of that cost. And if it's any other condition other than structural plastic, it will be replaced. If we have plastic that's a structural sound condition for the lateral, we will replace it in kind where we see it, and you'll get no cost. So, if your sewer doesn't connect to Pine Avenue, no cost. And if it's good condition plastic, no cost. We're just going to replace that couple feet that takes us to get from your lateral to the main. If it's anything other than structurally sound plastic, the city as part of this construction project will replace your sanitary sewer lateral from the main, wherever that's at, being in the center or on that east side up to the north end, all the way to just outside of the road edge or right of way. This one, I'm going to probably call it the right of way line, just because of the tight confines of the right of way with the edge of the road. So, we will replace it to where we find the best condition pipe. If we find pipe that's just junk, we're not going to hook our new stuff to junk pipe. And when I say junk pipe, there can be holes in your lateral, there can be cracks in it. We don't want to replace and connect to broken pipe. So, those footages of the final amount may change. So, these are all estimated amounts based on our best guess of what it's going to take to get from the main to beyond that property line. And you're only going to pay for what is going in the ground to the nearest foot. The city pays one-half of that cost, the property owner pays the other half of the sanitary sewer cost. But, as I said, if it doesn't connect to this portion that we're replacing, or if it's plastic, there's no cost to the property owner, and we can always take those off at the end. You're going to get a letter similar to this that says zero cost or zero footage because one of those conditions occurred. Another question on Pine Avenue that I've fielded for the last week, week and a half or so, is some of you, I think there's at least two to three, have a pretty high estimated amount that shows on there. The reason for that is, down at the south end where these urban growth duplexes are, we have no idea how your sanitary sewers run, no clue whatsoever. And we won't know that until we excavate the road. Once we excavate the road, if we're lucky, we're going to find your sanitary sewer lateral when we excavate it, and then we'll know what condition it is. Once we know what condition it is, we're going to take a picture of it to document what we have, and then we're going to replace it, and then we're just going to count footage of what it takes to get outside of that road edge or to the property line, and that's what we'll set the final SAD. But that duplex could have one lateral per building, it could have two laterals per building. So, when I estimate these, I estimate on the side of being conservative with it, trying to reduce sticker shock later with the final bill, because without knowing how many laterals or where these run, I'm going to err on prior practices of what we've observed in the field. So, there may be one lateral each from one of those duplexes that go to Pine Avenue, there may be two that come out for each of those duplexes, one for each side, or there could be none. They could be going down to Chatterton, they could be going out to east. We don't know until we do construction. If they don't connect to Pine, no cost. If you go further to the north, that southwest corner of Warwick and Pine, that one, similar situation. We don't know where those laterals go. They could go to Warwick, they could go to Pine, they also could go to a sanitary sewer that runs basically from the north edge of that doctor's office all the way to the north. If they connect to that sanitary sewer, there's no cost, because we're not doing any replacement there. As I mentioned, we can always remove later on. But those same homes up there could have one lateral per residence, they could have four. And I've estimated this on one each, so four total. That's why there's a higher cost shown on this next slide. What you see here, I've estimated this is an average, 22 lineal feet is what it'll take for the average property, one cleanout at each. These costs were all bid competitively, these were the lowest bid contractor, and that was their cost for the project to do that work. So, that number is good. That's not an estimated amount as far as those unit costs, because that's been bid, and we have a contract that shows that. Here's where I'm talking about where the prices deviate. If you notice, there's some, you see one at $65,000, you see a few, one at $16,000. That's just because we don't know where the laterals run. And as I mentioned, we've estimated some of those is four laterals, some is two laterals. There's one up at the north, that northeast corner of Pine and Warwick, we estimated a total of eight laterals. There could be zero laterals that connect to Pine Avenue, but erring on the side of caution, because we don't know where those go, that's what's conceivably a possibility that we could see. So, if they don't go to Pine, if they go to Warwick, zero cost. Or if they're plastic, zero cost. Move on to the next one.
That's the total cost. The city will pay half.
Estimated total cost, and that's based on estimated lineal...
City pays half, and the resident pays half.
Correct. Okay, so, question on the slide that you had prior with the mark out. What's it? This one, or the...
This one here.
Okay.
Is that going to be the end on the corner of Warwick, Warwick End and Pine Ave? Is it going to go beyond...
The road construction will, the sanitary sewer replacement will not.
Okay. So, and this will be the end is right there.
Some more than an estimated vicinity of that. We usually go about 50 to 70 foot beyond that intersection, depending on the condition of the pipe, what it takes to connect.
And Dave, the reason you're not going further is because it's expected to be new, isn't it?
Yes.
That's a newer road, newer construction.
Correct. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that was placed sometime 80s.
Oh, it's not.
So that's why we're not...
Based on 80s with that, so, yeah.
Are there other questions on this particular project, on the Pine Avenue project? Yes, Dr. Holmes.
It's for us, our biggest concern is just that...
Would you mind going to the front so that we can get you on tape and voice recording your question?
Name and your address.
Grant the podium if you would. We'd like your front and center. Share your name and address for us, please.
My name's Jeff Holmes. I'm the owner of Al, one of the owners of Al and Family Practices, which is more towards the north end. Our greatest concern is just about the staging of it, how you will close the road, how you'll make access to our offices and other businesses that are along there. And is there going to be some creative ways of doing the work, whether it be like nights or weekends or things like that, if you're going to have to have full closures of the roads? And so that's our biggest concern.
Thank you.
As of right now, I have a temporary construction plan, and I'm not going to say that right now, because we've got about three different options we're looking at. Want to talk to your business, as well as the schools. Talk to the schools first. Once we get that plan established, then we're going to have a residents meeting. That's going to be probably within the next month or two. We're going to schedule that out, and we're going to invite all the property owners to talk about all the logistics, staging, and construction plan. There is no plan to work nights, but Saturdays are an option to work at this point. Without getting into further detail about that, that'll be explained at that residents meeting, which you'll be invited to, and everybody who's a part of this SAD district will be invited to that as well.
Hey, are there other questions on this particular project, Dave?
My name is Pat Lekemeyer, and I'm at 496 East Warwick, and I am representing the eight condominiums that are on that corner here, Warwick-Pine's condominiums. And I'm here to seek some clarification on the criteria that was used to determine the fees that were associated with a special assessment, because we believe in our opinion that the $4,096.27 for each condo was much higher than an individual unit or a house was, and for like a privately owned house. So for our eight condominiums, the cost to us is going to be over $32,000. So, that's a lot. And if it was calculated on the 62 frontage, shouldn't this have been divided by eight instead of that 65 frontage, or 65, I guess it was 65 frontage, for each person that was in there? I have the same question as Jeff Holmes had about, is our water and sewer going to be available during this construction? Is that, you know, how that's going to be? If we do have to have a special assessment, is there any help for persons who are over the age of 65 or over the age of 85? Because we have a lot of senior citizens in our condominium complex. And if there's going to be a payment plan, which I've kind of heard from people, is that payment plan interest-free, and is that going to be tacked on to our water bill, or how is that going to go?
It's a memory test.
One question.
I might look at you and see if I've got them all, but first question, with how it was calculated, it's based on lineal footage of estimated pipe to replace. Going back to this slide. Took that number for those living units up there, multiply it by four. That's how we came up with it, based on estimated lineal footages. So, you have, it's not 22 lineal feet, and I'll go to that caveat here just a second and re-explain that one. That's the average person that we looked at, or average residence is 22 lineal feet. And then the cleanout is $1,800.10, so 1,801.10. That's for each cleanout. Now, going back here, for where you're talking about those living units up at the, I call it the southwest corner of Warwick and Pine, that sanitary sewer goes on the east side of that right of way, darn, basically underneath that sidewalk up there under, it's Pine Avenue School. So, that's the reason why your lineal footage is estimated to be longer there. It's one of the reasons why your cost looks a little higher right now. The other one is, looked at four sanitary laterals, so multiply that number by four, because I don't know how many laterals come out of those homes. If there's one, I doubt there's one coming out of each living unit. There's likely a minimum of two, but there could be four. Each one could be treated as its own plumbing, everything. Or, if they cut costs and put one lateral per two living units, that's not uncommon either. And as I mentioned, I can always take away from that cost, but I can't add new residents to it. So that cost is going to be based on if there's four laterals, and if all four of those go to Pine Avenue, and if all four of those do not contain plastic right now existing. Now, that caveat that I mentioned, the plastic, it could be based on the age of those units, they could have plastic or even sanitary sewer laterals. The other one is, as I mentioned, there's a sanitary sewer that runs about the north center of the doctor's office there, where Dr. Holmes' office is at, going kind of northwesterly, and then due north into Warwick. There's a good chance those laterals all connect into that sewer, and if that's the case, there is zero special assessment to those living units. If I were to guess, where I would put them, because it's the cheapest place to put them if I was putting in that construction today, just because you don't have to go into the road, it's all private property where that would connect to. So as far as the costs, fast forwarding now to maybe sometime a month from now, next year, but the same time next year, we'll do the final SAD, and then we're going to send a letter that says exactly how many feet we replaced, whether it's zero, whether it's 70 feet. If that doesn't go to Pine Avenue, and if there's plastic, zero cost. So, as of right now, looking at other payment options, I don't know if I really, I'm not in a position really to discuss that right now. I would look at, I've talked to at least one of the resident up there. I would wait and explore that option next year, and if you're concerned during construction, you can reach out and ask us what we find at that time. But the next year's SAD will say if there was any pipe that was replaced, and you might look at other funding options for that to help with the cost. The commission also has the ability to put a payment duration on there. I don't want to misspeak this. Sometimes they go three years, sometimes they're five years on the payments. That's up to how the commission decides. And they go with, I believe it's whatever prime interest rate is, so there is an interest rate that's a part of that cost.
Prime plus one. And I believe that's regulatory, we have to do that.
Yes. And it doesn't go on your water bill, but it does go on your taxes. So, it's not a part of your water sewer bill. And road frontage was not calculated in these costs, nor is your water sanitary usage. That's not a part of how this has come up with either. It's simply based on the amount of lineal foot and a cleanout that's placed if necessary. I think that might have answered most of your questions, if not all. Did that answer?
Water sewer going to be available during time of...
Yes, the water will be available most of the time, with the exception of making the connections to the main. And I'll get more depth into those questions during the residents meeting when we have those. But to answer those quickly, it'll be available most of the time unless we have to shut it off, or unless there's an emergency. The sanitary will be available all the time, so no disruption to your sanitary sewer.
And as much as possible, they'll notify you if you are going to lose water for any extended period of time, or if, I mean, if an emergency happens during construction, things happen, pipes do get yep or whatever.
And they will.
So it could very well happen. You just have to be prepared for it, I'm afraid.
Yep, as the mayor explained, we'll let you know at least the day before when we do a planned shutdown of the water line. Then we'll give you an estimated amount of time that that'll take, but we won't stop until the water's back on that night. So, could be midnight, could be three in the morning, but we won't stop until the water's back on. Anything else related to sanitary sewer on Pine Avenue?
Yes, is there a... Would you please go to the podium and state your name and address?
You get to share in the front up here. I'm not special.
My name, my name's Albert Cantu. I live at 1020 Pine Avenue. My question is, do you have a timeframe, estimated timeframe, or ballpark when all this is going to start?
Estimated right now, based on the contract, will be April. Depending on the contractor, depends on weather and conversations with the school if we start sooner. But right now, our plan is to start mid-April, so the contract states, and we'll have all the way up until the end of next fall, but it will be next spring and summer, for sure.
Hey, are there more questions about the Pine Avenue project? Hey, hearing done, so...
Hearings for everything, I think, isn't it?
Right.[1668.82] So no more questions on that one, so you can move on to the second one if you would please, Dave?
Yeah, thank you. All right, similar information to what I said with Pine Avenue. Same rules apply. If it's plastic existing, we will not replace, we'll just replace whatever footage there is to get us to the main. And if it doesn't connect to this, which pretty sure bet that all three of those are connected to Charles Avenue, if not potentially the fourth, but I'm looking at the west side. But if they're existing plastic, you won't get a charge. We'll just connect to the pipe of what's there. Not very long footages that we estimated on this street because the sanitary sewer lies just underneath the west side sidewalk underneath of Charles Avenue. So and the reason for the replacement of this sanitary sewer, while it may not be that old, it does need to be upsized. So that's why we're not going further to the south of the sanitary sewer because that was put in in the mid-late 60s. But because of the apartment complex and the amount of flow up to the north, this is getting upsized to connect to the sanitary sewer that was replaced on Iowa within the last year or two. So that's the reason for the replacement of this and we're replacing it in the exact same location also. Any questions related to Iowa Street?
Questions on Iowa Street? Or Charles?
Charles, I'm sorry, yeah. Apologies for that.
People really heard something.
Make a difference, this is the right street.
Are there any questions? Okay, I don't think we have any. Please move ahead.
All right, this one, you'll notice there's a Y cost that was not inclusive. So there's the cost on that. Same rules apply, there's a cost per lineal foot, you'll notice price differences, different contractor, different soil conditions that we're dealing with as well. Okay, we're looking at, this one is Richmond Avenue. Same discussion, I'm not going to save everybody the time. This one's getting replaced just because it's old and in very bad shape. So this is in conjunction again with the street replacement project. So is there anybody here from Richmond that has any questions?
Hey, I don't see anybody. Please move ahead. I'm sorry, is there a question?
No, I said I live on Richmond. I just want to know the cost.
Okay. What's your address? Sorry?
602.
602, I believe she said, yeah.
Okay. Your estimated amount total, 1,207. And that's estimated based on the estimated amount of footage that's going to take to get from the main to within the right of way, near the right of way edge in front of your house. And that's your cost, the city will pay the other estimated cost.
I was just curious.
And I didn't mention this too with the other slides. If anybody's ever had a sanitary sewer replaced or knows of anybody, the one thing I do like to say is a precursor to all this, that's the best deal in town. If you pay somebody privately to do that, you're looking at about rough numbers right now that I know of, about $8,000. If you're at Pine Avenue, you're upwards of $30,000 to $35,000 because of the conditions of Pine Avenue, the detouring that it would take and that type of thing. So that's something to keep in mind with these costs too.
And I guess with that thought too, Dave, I would like to remind everybody, if you don't have good plastic sewer going from the point that where the city's going to hook you on, and if you've got some older, 100-year-old, because that's an old neighborhood, I used to live there, I've done some sewer work in that neighborhood a couple houses ago. It's a good time to get with a contractor and do your own personal digging the rest of the way to your house because quite often you can get it done cheaper while this other project is going on and get the whole thing taken care of and avoid problems down the road. So keep that in mind as well if you would.
Does somebody say to you, I mean, when they're digging that up, do they say?
Sometimes, some contractors may knock on the door if they're looking for additional work, others may not, so you may have to go to them.
So you talk to the contractors, not the city?
Yep. That'd be a private.
Yep, conversation.
And that's something we would talk about at the residence meeting too. We invite everybody to the residence meeting, we'll give you context or information. We're going to talk for about an hour on what to expect, that type of thing. And the field techs out there, the city or the OHM is going to be our contractor that helps us with the field supervision on these. If we know it's in bad shape, we're going to let you know, especially if we can, if time allows for it. I know for myself or Christine, we're out there, it's not uncommon, as the mayor said, especially this part of town, there's cast iron or clay and none of them are in very good condition when you dig them up. So when I say that estimated amount, I really do mean that estimated amount because when we're digging these up, you're going, ooh, okay, go to their four feet back, let's find out what we've got to work with. And we really hope we don't go into private property very far with these because then it adds the bill up. But morally, you don't want to connect to junk pipe. And when I say junk again, I want to emphasize this, a lot of these are broken when we excavate them. And we didn't break them, they're broken. It's just the ground around them and the heavens above that keeps that from plugging with dirt. So or if it's rotten, rusted, things like that, if you're having issues with it, roots, tree roots aren't kind of these things. So and we'll talk about that at the residence meeting too. We'll let you know with the contractors, that type of thing. And if they choose to do the replacement work, they can privately contract with you on that. Thank you.
Now, is there something in the contract that gives the company that's doing the main, do they have, do they have the right? Because technically, when you're doing excavation work, they have right to that hole, so or that excavation dirt. Is there something in there where we can then work with that? Because technically, they could say no, you don't have access to this trench as a homeowner. Is there something in there that protects?
Yeah. It's not in the contract, but especially the contractor working on this one, if they choose not to, as long as they're out of the way, they're not going to have a problem with having somebody outside come in and do it, as long as they're just not in their way during construction practices. What they're likely going to tell them is, if you can give us a week to come back and do this, we can either leave the trench open to this extent, tell us today and then work and get it done that day and then we'll come back and do either water service work or anything in that city, just because of this tight confines through these. That could be an option.
I have a question.
Would you please come to the podium, state your name and address?
My name's Todd Mitchell. I'm 828 Pine Avenue. Currently, my sanitary sewer runs to Pine Avenue. So should I expect that I'm going to have to hire the contractor now as my sanitary sewer comes out, makes a 90 currently? So this is going to guarantee that I'm going to have to have that redone?
Let's go back and look. I'm not sure with all the addresses. I'll go back and look at that slide on Pine Avenue just to see if you're listing.
Because I've listed, I'm listed on Richmond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I would rather be on Richmond because Richmond is a much shorter.
Shorter distance?
Right.
I'm sorry.
Because currently, it goes just outside the house and then goes to Pine.
You're, you're 828 Pine Avenue? Now, the first question we had is, is it guaranteed after replacing? No, it guarantees nothing. So what this does is tells us, gives us the ability to replace if we find any of those conditions where it's not plastic or next to anything. If you want to come to Richmond, based on what you're saying, talk to us after the meeting and we can look at doing that. If you're part of the SAD, we could run that out and have you pay half, us pay the other half if that's the case.
Okay.
Thank you. Especially if it's old pipe, we want to get rid of the old stuff if we can.
Hey, other questions for the Richmond project? If you hear any, please move ahead.
All right. Construction of sanitary sewer leads on Moyer Avenue. Anybody from Moyer Avenue knows we're serious on this one. They started today actually, yesterday they started milling it up, but today they're actually starting to dig the holes. Same rules apply here. Plastic, we don't replace it. If it's anything other than structural plastic, we'll replace it and we'll issue for half if we'll replace. Questions on Moyer?
I have a question. My name's Jim Ray. I'm 536 Moyer Avenue. That little word, spout is in my waist car.
I wish my eyes were that great.
Her house, the little gray one on the form right there?
What corner were you talking about, I'm sorry?
Moyer and whatever that.
By the north end? Okay. Northwest corner.
Yeah, she wants to get hers done. Do you know how much that, if we had done?
Based on what I observed today, unless something changed as of 10 o'clock this morning, that's not going to be an option to add to this because it looks like it's outside of the construction limits of that project based on the excavation. It's probably going to be another 20 to 50 feet further north to do that. So that's not within the project boundaries at this point.
Okay, so if we get, if we wanted to do it now, is it time to do it though?
It could be, but this is not part of.
I know it's not part of this project, I get that part.
Not as a part of this contract, no, not unless the contractor wanted to place that. I'm sorry?
Have you guys ever planned on going north?
I can't give you a date, but yes, at some point, that would be the idea. But if it's any point in the next, probably six to 10 years, probably not, just based on what I can forecast with street ratings and sanitary sewer replacements and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
From Maxwell, 817 Moyer. I'm just on the bend here going around to Hubble. End of last summer, I replaced all my sewer lines underneath the house, all the way out to the street. As well, I poured a new driveway or I had a new driveway poured. Am I included in that charge if I already have brand new sewer lines going all the way out to the street?
You're part of this initial SAD, but the final you will not be if what you said is correct.
All right. And then the driveway as well, I had asphalt traffic poured last year, but they've already cut a section of that off. Is there going to be another portion of cement or asphalt going out to the road?
Yeah, the lead and drive approach part back here.
Okay. And are they going to put sidewalks and gutters in?
No.
Or curbs?
There's curb and government on sidewalk on my street.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yes, if what you said is correct, we replace that sanitary sewer, we'll just replace the main and whatever footage it takes to connect that existing pipe to the new, it'll be zero cost.
Everybody knows who I am, right? She got a lot of me, you guys all about doing that. That's my question. Why would she need a lot of people involved in this?
Because there's a potential. We don't know where those sanitary sewer laterals come out at. And as I mentioned, anybody who conceivably be connected within that construction boundary, I include on this initial SAD. And if there is no sanitary sewer lateral that's replaced as a part of our construction limits, then there's zero cost. But I add anybody in theory that can be connected to that or a possibility for the fact that I can always remove them later on. So that's why they're a part of this initial.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
So to clarify, Dave, if you start digging and you find she is connected, then she would have an option.
Yeah, that's what we went for.
But you're not really expecting that to be the case.
Correct. Based on what I observed this morning when I was out there at 10, the limits are, because I've been made aware that you were looking for it or you're the person you know of that that address was looking to do it. And based on when we replaced that manhole and the amount of footage, we're going about 50 foot out of there, we observed no manhole, or excuse me, no sanitary lateral going to that house, based on where the water service line is, how I can estimate and take another 20 to 40 feet to get that far up to potentially connect to it. And that's outside of the project boundaries. So that's why we didn't go that far.
Thank you.
And just, you know, to clarify, you know, one of the reasons that we're not sure, Dave, is giving estimates, the stuff that's in the ground was done 100 years ago and nobody kept maps or good records of what necessarily happened to these things. So there's a lot of unknowns that happened when we started digging.
We tell them about these kind of the laterals are ahead of time. Sometimes sanitary sewer, there may be debris in there, we don't see the lateral. So we have a good idea where most of them are, but sometimes there's bellies in this pipe or it's full of material, we can't physically see anything. So we have to pay special attention when we're doing the construction, make sure we don't miss one through there. And that's how we don't know verbatim where every lateral is and where it goes and if they're even live or not. So we know that when we do construction. Kind of helps to answer that a little bit.
And just to add, as part of the process, Dave and Christine did hold a neighborhood meeting on this particular street before they got the construction going to go through the process, all those questions that you'll have about what do I do with my trash, my water and sewer, when it will be on and off, those sort of things are answered at that time. So that will happen to the rest of the streets as well.
Correct. Yeah, we held that meeting last week from Moyer Avenue.
All right, are there other questions on Moyer? Don't believe there are, Dave. Please move ahead.
Okay, this next one's for Austin South River. Same rules, there's a sanitary sewer on South River. This is in extremely poor condition. That I know based on our saw grant information that we have. And this is also part of the street reconstruction. Same rules apply here. If there's plastic, we'll just replace what's there. If there's not plastic, it's a good condition, we'll replace it. And however much any footage it takes, how many feet, the joint property owner will get half of that. One caveat on this one is if there's a few empty lots, if there's empty lots or empty parcels, we will, if there is no sanitary sewer that's currently available, we'll put in a lateral or a blank off of there in the event that if that lot is ever developed, they won't have to excavate into the street to connect to the sanitary sewer main. Because we're trying to make these roads last as long as we can. So anything that looks like a buildable lot, that's an empty parcel, we will always put a sanitary sewer lateral in there with a clean out, the clean out so you can find it in the next 50 years, 100 years, if you need to find it to connect to it to keep that road from being polluted. And creating a non-water type connection to the sanitary sewer main, we don't like those either. Any questions on Austin South River?
Somebody come back. She's going up.
Yeah, here. You're this way, I'm sorry. My name is Jordan Whitmire and I live at 228 South River Avenue. How is this going to affect my driveway is my question? Because my driveway is already pretty short to my two-car garage and if we dig all this up and put in curbs and gutters, I want to know how it's going to affect my driveway. And then my other big question is, I'm assuming this yellow line is like the boundary that's...
It's an extreme approximate, it's just to show up on a larger map.
I have a really large tree in my front yard that I don't want to lose. And I want to know if that is going to be affected by that as well. So those are my two big questions.
As for the driveway with the road construction and how the driveways will work, I'll address those during the residence meeting when we hold those prior to the construction project. But the sanitary sewer, without knowing where it's at, I can't speak how it'll affect your entire driveway just because I don't know where it lines up right now. With the road, with the cut of the driveway, we cut as much as we need to, which is we try to keep it minimal to connect to the new edge of the road. The tree, I would anticipate that's going to stay, but I don't know exactly where the sanitary lateral is. Right now, I'm going to guess that the tree can stay there, but without knowing more on what we find during the field. And that's why I invite everybody to show up to the residence meeting when we hold those prior to the construction project. I'm in a better position to answer those questions.
I have a question? Hi, I'm Jordan's mom. She lives at 228 South River and I'm also here for Barb Bautch who's at 517 Marshall. I can't be here tonight. So everything I've heard, it doesn't sound like you are going to be widening any of the other roads, but you are going to be widening this one, correct?
That's, that's true on this street. I'm also widening a few others as well. But that's not a part of the sanitary sewer discussion, but it is a part of the street construction.
So like Jordan was asking about the tree and the driveway and stuff, because this road right now is so small, it's only 16 feet wide. And in our discussions previous, you have 30 foot from the middle of the road, correct? That is your easement?
The right of way.
Right of way.
Approximately, yes. You see the 30 from the center, approximate from the center or 33?
Right. So with this particular road, it's not so much the sewer and the water issues, it's when you widen that road because the road is already so small. 30 feet takes 22 foot into their property versus a normal 15 foot. So when I did the measurements, Jordan and Barb's, they're both, the question is, when you widen that road, are we going to widen it the extra seven feet on each side or are we going to continue to take it further out with curb and gutter and all those things happening? And does that benefit the project that you're doing with the sewer and the water or is that something alternative to that?
That, the discussion on the road width, that has really, that has nothing to do with sanitary sewer replacement at all. That's, that's a separate discussion. When we do city streets replacement, we do 29 feet back of curb to back of curb. So then usually that's from the center of the right of way out, but there may be other factors that we have to take into account based on the ability to put the road there. I know there's been a few that have shifted. But that goes approximately from the center. There's also water main that's going in there. That doesn't necessarily go under the street surface itself. That's based on where the sanitary sewer is located and we have to keep it a minimum of 10 feet away from the sanitary sewer. It also determines where the existing water main is at and where we place those. But the sanitary sewer is going to be replaced in kind in the center of the road, approximately, well, where it's at is approximately the center. So we're not proposing to move it or anything of that nature, so.
Dave, that's like when you did on my street, Slater Street, which is three blocks of there. Mine was smaller and we.
That's correct. Yeah, regardless of the existing width, we go to 29, I call that a typical residential street is the minimum. That accommodates two-way traffic flow with parking on one side. Charles Avenue, we're going to widen that street out to have a non-motorized bicycle trail along that. Moyer Avenue, there's a pretty good chance that one, I think, is about two to three feet wider on each side to accommodate for the parked cars on each side. And these, these parts of town that are older, this one is definitely one of them. What that likely was back until it became what it is today, was likely, I call it a goat path, it could have been dirt and they just put tar and chip seal over it, or there could have been actually gravel. I'll know more when we tear out the road. I'm guessing there's a very thin layer of gravel based on the condition and the age of this neighborhood. So that explains, that's one of the explanations for its narrow current width right now is it was probably a trail at one point and it's been basically tarred and stoned over top. And it's just continued over time and that, which would explain the condition of it.[1752.75] So and we're replacing the road, the water line and the sanitary sewer line because once we do any kind of utility work on there, that road will be obliterated. It'll never survive the construction traffic. So. And because of these street projects, we do all the utilities at the same time to help ensure that the roads last as long as possible. Trying to eliminate potential main breaks, road cuts, anything like that in the future to extend the life of these once they're replaced.
Okay, are there other comments or questions on the Austin Street project in South River? I can't see any, Dave, so please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I believe this is our final one for Rosedale Street. As you can see, this is our construction limits. As I mentioned before, the yellow lines are not gospel. That's just a highlighter to kind of show you the vicinity we're talking about. And same rules apply here. So I'll save everyone's time if there's any questions on Rosedale Street.
Herb Posh, I live at the corner of Rosedale and Grove Avenue. Our present sewer lines come off Grove Avenue approximately 100 feet north of the intersection. And we are serviced by the Grove Avenue sewer line. Would that remove us from the.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potentially, based on where that lines up on Grove and how far down we replace it. We typically go anywhere from 20 to 50 feet beyond the manhole. So that in the event that we open up the adjoining street, we don't have to cut into the new one. We can connect to new plastic with a new street project.
Because we already have the new plastic.
Correct. Okay. And if that's the condition and if we do get there and that's true, then there'd be no cost to you. But without excavating, I can't tell you for sure.
Any other comments or questions?
Hi, my name is Carol Woodcock, and I live at 1400 Rosedale, the last house. Are you going to end at the sidewalk or are you coming to my driveway or?
With the lateral, I'm sorry.
With the, my house ends right in front of Grove Street. Or the middle of my front yard is at Grove Street. Are you coming to my driveway this way? Or are you ending right at Grove or at the sidewalk or the curb and gutter?
Okay, for that, it'll be well within the sidewalk line, within the terrace. As far as what's excavated as a part of that street project, without going into more detail, looking at the drawings, I can't give you specifics. I can talk about sanitary sewer, but when we have that construction meeting with the residents, we can talk about that then and you'll be invited to that meeting.
Okay.
But as a generic answer, we will be between the sidewalk and the edge of the road. The sanitary lateral, though, we might have to go under the sidewalk towards your house depending on the condition of your existing lateral.
Okay. And do you know when they are doing Rosedale Street?
Yeah, we're looking at the summer of 2026.
Hey, other questions on the Rosedale project?
My name is Jason Adel, 425 East Warway. I do leave. This is just very simple. I do leave that you receive a copy of this. It's just.
They have a copy.
They have some.
They received a copy of this one.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give us the dates that you're going to plan on doing each of these streets, like Richmond Street?
Richmond Street will be spring of next year. I won't have that exactly until we, what I'm going to do is confirm with the contractor to get that set in stone. And then I'm going to invite, like you mentioned, all the residents as a part of these street projects to a meeting, a residents meeting. It'll be on an evening. Typically, it's at 7 o'clock. Then I'll be better positioned to tell you when these projects will start, estimated duration, what to expect as a part of the street construction projects. So every letter you get from the city, read it. Because there's a lot of them going out right now. Water meters, water service lines, construction, all that good stuff.
So Dave, to clarify, you're going to have a meeting for each of these projects yet this year? Is that the plan or is this going to be closer to when the project occurs?
No, thank you for that question. Yes, closer to when the project occurs. If I have one in 2026, we're likely going to forget all this stuff. So the ones that we're going to hold next spring, the streets we're going to construct, I'm going to invite you to a meeting, anybody that's a part of those streets, probably at some point December or January. And we're going to talk about the projects, estimated start time, duration. Those are times to ask questions, ask specific to your property, that type of thing. So.
So could you, is there someplace we can post what's scheduled for? I think we've got it here. I'm sure I've seen it for '25 and '26.
Yes.
The division of the different projects.
Yep.
It may already be on our website. I know I've seen it from some of the work we've done.
We'll make sure that it's boldly listed on the website. And as you bring that up, it's probably a good idea to send out a letter or two to all these people to give them an estimated year. And then stay tuned for any future mailings that they may get from us. Just because this is a unique SAD. There's so many streets. And it's not just going to be next year. Some will be summer of 2025. Some will be 2026, just based on contractor timeline and schedules.
Additional questions?
Yes, can we go back to Moyer?
Yeah.
Moyer Street?
Mm-hmm.
Right now, it's dirt, all the way down Moyer.
Come to the point, we can say your name and address for it, please.
Hi, I'm Barb Ramon. I live at 623 Moyer. It's all dirt anyways right now. How long is that going to be that way?
As I mentioned, we had the residents meeting last week. We're inviting people to talk about the construction and how that's going to work. But it's going to be all the way through the wintertime as far as gravel. It's not going to be necessarily dirt. It may be gravel. It may be crushed concrete, depending on what the contractor has access to. And the reason we're starting it so early this year, not next year, is because the contractors have an opening in their schedule. So we can accommodate to get that started. The sooner we start it this fall, the faster we'll have it done next spring. The idea being that we'll have the water line placed, the sanitary sewer and the storm work, everything done underground. And then in the spring, they'll go through and do the road preparation and put the road back in. I'm going to estimate probably, depending on Michigan winters and spring, probably some point late May, I'm guessing. It depends when the asphalt plants open up is when the surface will be placed.
Okay, they cut the end of my driveway. They will replace it?
Yes.
When they're done. This before winter or in?
Likely in the spring. It'll be gravel throughout the wintertime, though.
Okay, because I live right on the corner and it's a.
That south corner?
Yes, Hillsdale and Moyer, right on the corner.
Yeah, you were in pretty bad shape before it began. But yeah, it's going to be gravel throughout the winter and it won't be, it'll be replaced in the spring. Your drive approach, same thing, it'll be replaced in the spring.
What do you mean? It was pretty bad?
That corner was in tough shape and it was all gravel and just in tough shape before we started on that. So. South corner of Moyer and Hillsdale. Yeah, there.
Yes, that hub, Hillsdale.
That radius down there.
She's in the middle there.
Oh, you're not down there to the south end. Okay, I'm talking to the south end. I'm sorry. I don't know if that's.
Several years ago, they did Hillsdale already.
Yes, that's true.
So and right on the corner, I just want to know, are we going to get the snowplows?
Yes.
In the wintertime?
Yes.
If we have any problems in the future with this, who do we contact?
Myself.
You have Alma?
Yes, myself or Christine.
Okay. Okay, I made that clear.
Now, that doesn't mean it's going to be smooth sailing all winter. It's going to be gravel road. There could be potholes. But we will grade it to make sure it's passable during the wintertime.
Well, that's a pistol right there because it just started pouring down now. So. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on any of the projects at this point? So anybody got missed? We don't want to, if you've got questions, we'd like you to.
I have one question. Not related to the project in a way on Rosedale. Is there anything the city can do while they're rebuilding this street? It's slowing traffic down. We have people come by there 45, even 50 mile an hour. It's an expressway.
No, they go straight around the curb to sun up to get their beer. And there's a lot of small kids in like the two-block area where they fly down through there.
There's, I mean, we have traffic enforcement. We have the police. I would suggest you talk to the police if it's a problem. They can add additional patrols, but there's just no way for them to be everywhere all at once. And unfortunately, when you make a road smoother, it's not going to slow them down being out.
Well, there's a big dip right by the apartments there. That doesn't stop them because they get by them and they go.
That might be encouragement if we give her that dip. That might discourage them. We lose the thrill of going through that dip. Depending on who's driving there. I'm not sure.
Well, they did, right in front of my driveway on Rosedale there, there's a bunch of potholes. So they, a month ago, put a little bit of black stuff in. But they were going in my driveway, sent a ramp to avoid the hole. Yeah, that's fun.
Yeah. Well, this is not going to solve everything. I guarantee you that. It'll make water sewer and the road better, but it's not going to solve people's bad behavior.
No, it did.
Was there a certain year in construction that they started using plastic?
At some point, if you were to make me guess, some point in the 70s. It depended on the contractors, depended on cost, some, you know, tried and true. Some people liked clay at the times. They liked to cast iron. At some point in the 80s, though, things were replaced as far as plastic goes. I'd make that reasonable assumption. But that doesn't necessarily mean everything under the road was replaced with plastic. They're just like everything, cost drives. And so if there was a problem with the sanitary sewer, it's not uncommon that contractors would just replace the section under the road that was broken or at the right-of-way that was in bad shape and left the bad stuff still there or things that weren't out in as bad a condition at that point. But through time, they've gotten worse. So that's why I say those estimated footages can change. Because if they replace 20 feet of plastic within that street edge and it only takes us five feet to connect to plastic with what we find, they'll get charged for that five feet. But I don't have a hard date on when plastic was used or timelines. Same thing as if anybody has any drawings that show where their laterals are at. Those are nice to take into consideration, but they're not as built. And even then, if it was built 40 years ago, as built, there could be improvements. There could be alterations changed. So I say we don't know what we find until we excavate.
Just one other question. I'm sorry. On the Warwick Pines condos, they just built those 10 years ago. Wouldn't you kind of know where those were?
It was a little longer than 10 years ago, but it's probably, I guess, at some point in the 90s. I can make assumptions, but I'm not going to make assumptions.
The condos were more recent than are the Grove.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to make an assumption on what the material is because they might have used cast iron at the time for replacing. So it'd be uncommon, but I don't know until I excavate. So I can always remove later on. But if I say no, make that assumption, and I dig it up and find it, and I find out it's something we don't want to see under there, I can't add you to it. It's great for you, but not great for us because then we can't recoup half the costs. So.
I have. This is 889 Moston. In my basement, I found a certificate from State Inspector for my final sewer inspection. I live on the corner of Mill and River View. And apparently that whole area was, sewer stuff was orange bird pipe.
That was very common in the 70s.
Orange bird pipe is a carpet roll impregnated with tar.
Roofing, it's actually roofing material, but yeah, it's.
Yeah. And it had a life expectancy, 20 years? It just flattens out. But that was in 71. So with plastic, I might have been right on the cusp, but I'm right. And unfortunately, that was all my responsibility after that, including digging the street up. So just a follow-up to when the plastic may have gone in. Mine was all orange bird. Did it flatten out?
Oh, yeah. When it was put in, it was the greatest thing since sliced bread. But like anything, time changes it and tends to do what less, I call it taco, starts to just compress until nothing can flow through it anymore. And you usually find that out on a holiday or New Year's Eve.
The plumber that put that in said, well, you know, this was state of the art when it went in because it was replacing tile. And he said, but you know, we really don't know about plastic either.
Same thing they said about lead pipes back in the early 20s. Oh, they said it, forget it. We'll get to that with those. So. Anything else for sanitary sewers?
Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone else. Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion further. Any comments or questions from the board at this point? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried and the hearing is closed. Thank you and thank you everybody for your questions and your attention. We'll move on to the actual resolutions. First up is A, we are considering a resolution to authorize the SAD 2024-1 for the Pine Avenue Sanitary Sewer Construction Project and approve the special assessment role as presented.
We will make motion approval.
Probably do individuals since they're presented that way. Sorry. Motion was Michelle. Roger was in support. Last chance for comments or questions. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving down to B, consideration of a resolution to authorize the SAD 2024-2 for Charles Avenue Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project and approve the special assessment role as presented. Have motion support. Last chance for comments or questions. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving down to C, consideration of a resolution to authorize the SAD 2024-3 for Richmond Street Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project and to approve the special assessment role as presented.
Support.
Have a motion in support. Last chance for comments or questions. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. Moving down to D, consideration of a resolution to authorize the SAD 2024-4 for Moyer Avenue Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project and approve the special assessment role as presented. Have a motion support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. E, consideration of a resolution to authorize the SAD 2024-5, which is the Austin Street, South River Street Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project and to approve the special assessment role as presented. Hey, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. F, consideration of a resolution to authorize SAD 2024-6, which is our Rosedale Street Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project and approve the special assessment role as presented. We have a motion in support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. Thank you. Some heavy lifting. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Dave and the team and everybody that's helped with all these projects. There's a lot going on. And I'm glad to have the funding, glad to have these things. Hey, things happen, but it is disruptive to everybody's lives. All right, we'll move on down to two agreements. First, we are considering a resolution to renew the Energy Demand Response Renewal Program, which is an agreement with Consumers Energy for a term of two years, starting June 1st, 2025, through May 31, 2027, and to authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. Your pleasure.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support.
Just, we did this two years ago. It's been a benefit to our wastewater fund. We've only had to turn the generator on twice for this particular program. Other than that, we've received our check yearly. This year, it's gone up a little bit to 5,372. So for the next two years, we'll receive that. And depending on if a standby generator can be turned on to help out with the load into the system. But that was only asked for twice over the last two-year period. So it was a benefit to us.
Okay, questions? I guess I had a question and probably directed to Curtis. I want to see if you've done any analysis. What did it cost us to run during those two events? I mean, do we, we have any idea of? Here, I'm trying to lay off the hook, Dave, and Curtis.
Sorry about that. You heard me too much. You're going to hear me a little bit more.
He's the star tonight.
Yeah, Dave Real Public.
Okay, you check his numbers.
As Eric mentioned, we've only done this twice in the last four years we've done this program. Before, it's been an annual renewal. This year, they're asking for a two-year. The twice that they've done it before, they can ask us to run it up to four hours. In the past, those two times, we've only run it for two hours each time. And we use diesel fuel. That's our backup. That's our system that the generators run on. And that's one of the questions I always look at is how much diesel fuel does it use for what they're asking for? And I look at prior experiences. They just, they haven't asked us to use it. The inverse of this is if there is a brownout situation, they shut it off. We're on diesel until as long as it takes them to get the power back up. This gives us a guarantee and it gives us a check each year for at least allowing us to do that and having us available for a volunteer shutdown. But the duration is only about four hours. Four hours total according to the agreement with what they.
So it's four hours per event. How much diesel do we burn in an hour on the generator? Is it just one of our generators or is this multiple generators?
Just the one over wastewater. It's the one that runs wastewater. If I'm going to estimate, probably for an hour, somewhere between 10 to 20 gallons. And those are 400-gallon tanks.
Five bucks a gallon, 20 gallons, you're talking 100 bucks defect?
And just to put in context, these kick on once a month just to make sure they run and recycle. So one of the things that was a benefit to us, the very first time they did this a couple of years ago, we found out there was a weak breaker on the generator. When they asked us to kick it on, it was that breaker. We called Consumers and said, sorry, we can't run it. The generator's not on. So it was a good backup protocol. So it was a good backup protocol, just to make sure that thing works under the full load when it's needed, so there's multiple benefits to it. But the times we've done it, maximum we've ever run it at any given time was two hours when they've asked us to do it.
Now, do we factor in our maintenance program? If we were to run it, then would it then forego our monthly?
This caught, this pays for our maintenance agreement for our, I believe it's, every two years, that maintenance agreement, and we have Cummins, we have an agreement with them, where they come and service it, do a, do a load test on it, and then they'll also find out if there's any weak points, and then they make a recommendation if anything needs to be replaced as part of that agreement.
But then if it does kick on, let's say the middle of the month, because they need it, then would that push back that, maybe that month's service for that, in terms of your test run, because I assume you, you said you test it once a month?
Yes.
With that, then, so really, how often do we run it in a test situation?
Usually it's about.
Hour?
About an hour, maybe it's once a month. It's typically, I don't know, the cycle of this one, it's probably Sunday, City Hall's kicks on in the weekend when we do the backup.
So in both those scenarios, where we ran it for two hours, really, it's only an hour of time that we wouldn't have ran it otherwise? Okay.
Sounds like a really good deal, though.
Yeah.
It's benefited, just for context, just to explain to the city manager, we just got our check, actually a week ago, for, for this year, so that was about $4,800 for this year, so we're being on the standby, and we didn't turn it on at all this year, this past year, so. And that goes directly to the credit for the energy consumption of wastewater.
And is there any penalty? I mean, you mentioned today, an event where we failed to turn it on, because we had some sort of a failure in the system. Is there a penalty to us if we cannot respond?
That was also a good thing, we had that problem. What you can do is they'll just say, are you available for another shutdown? So at that time, they'd ask for, like this agreement says, up to four events in the summer, two events in the spring, and in the fall, four events in the winter, two events in the spring. They'll just say, okay, you're going to forego this one, but we'll have another opportunity to ask you as a part of these four different, call them tokens, uses, however they'll ask you to do it. They just asked us if we were available to do it again, didn't do it that year, they did it following, so.
So it sounds like they're good partners in this.
They handle that.
Okay, which is not surprising. Okay, anybody else have questions?
Do you have any concerns, Dave, with the two-year versus one-year?
Not with historical information, absolutely not. Not based on how well it's worked for us for the annual, so that was one of the concerns I had when I talked to wastewater superintendent, was because of this, we just, I said, looking back at the last four years, and based on the increase that they're offering us with this one, seems like a good deal to try.
So they factored in the ask later versus that second year, because I assumed it would go up, if we just did it one year, it would go up again?
Correct. So, yeah, that was one of the ideas before, it's been an annual, now they're looking at a two-year. I think they're trying to get more peace of mind with the power grid for forecasting and that type of thing, but historically, it's been a good benefit to us.
Less paperwork from them and us. That's good for everybody, getting the paper. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, I believe we do have a motion on the table for this agreement. Are there any additional comments or questions? If there are none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, that motion is carried, thank you. Moving on down to reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us this evening, we have the Parks Committee September 2020, September 23rd, 2024 draft meeting minutes, the Alma Transit September 2024 report, and the city manager's report for this evening. Your pleasure.
Move to receive one and two.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, we have received the two reports.
Move to receive three.
Support.
We have a motion of support for the city manager's report. Eric.
All right, real brief, because I knew we were going to have a lot of public hearing comments tonight, so that was the first portion of the newsletter. Secondly, we're heading in the fall, do encourage everyone to get on the website and look at dates for final yard waste pickups, when leaf pickup comes in. Right now, leaf schedule, the last full week of yard waste pickup is October 25th, that's the last day we do pickup, that's the last third full week of October, that's historically when we do the last bit of yard waste pickup. Yard waste pickup is when you take brush to the curb, or you put brush into a recycle bag and lay it at the curb, that's your yard waste. The following week of October, that starts our leaf picking, leaf pickup. You push, either push the, you push the leaves to the curb, and we come by with a leaf machine and take care of it that way. We will not pick up, if you bag up the leaves, our crews will not take those, so please don't bag them up, and then we got to ask you to dump them out, and it's just a lot of extra work for you.
The crews will not dump the bags.
They will not dump the bags out, we do not, no. So just please take a look at that, and we have sent out that in the, the water bills, but not everyone gets a physical water bill. It is on our website, but we will do a Facebook blast post for folks to remind them of those cutoffs, because sometimes people get confused of yard waste pickup and, and leaf pickup. Just for information, our Riverwalk lights, those are set to always come on at 5:00 a.m., so obviously, it's getting darker earlier and later, those are set for 5:00 a.m. to come on.
They are not on from the dam to conservation park.
They weren't right up until yesterday, they were fixed, they should be back on now.
They were not this morning.
Okay, thank you.
We'll fix that.
When I saw that, I'm like, I'll just tell you, because this morning when I'm walking, they were not on.
They're supposed to be coming on at 5:00 a.m., because we set a timer for the mornings, because obviously, there, there's light eyes on them, so if it gets daylight enough, they turn off, so. So as the time, the daylight hours change, it closes those off. Meter replacements, wanted to give the commission update on that. Like to thank everyone, all the citizens that have received their letters to set their appointments for meter replacement. As of last Thursday, early Friday morning of last week, the meter company had sent out 1,524 letters to set appointments. At that point, we had 536 residents that had set their appointments, that's a very good rate, even the meter company said, we're doing very well for our first mailing. Since then, we are all, we're closer to 700 appointments now, so please, everyone keep up, keep up the good work with that, and so we can get this first round done, and get these meters changed out. And for those folks leaving to head to warmer climates during the winter, please reach out to the meter company and get that scheduled, they'll take care of you, even though you might not have received a letter yet, they want to get those folks taken care of before you leave for, for a couple of months. Street maintenance projects, so we just wanted to bring, we're closing in on the end of the year for those projects. With everyone's approval of the street millage, on top of what Dave talked about tonight with our neighborhood street millage rehabilitation projects, we started some maintenance projects. This year, we were able to do eight neighborhood streets with chip seal, and 30 different segments of the streets across the city for crack sealing. Our chip seal program, we spent 78,191 dollars, and in our crack sealing program, we spent 36,300, I'm sorry, 734 dollars. Our hope is, as we talked about when we asked for the extra millage, that we could extend the lives and raise the pay-to-rating of some of our neighborhood streets and major streets, and keeping them going longer, and hopefully do catch someday, maybe, maybe? No, probably not, catch up to, to streets to keep them at, you know, five and above, but that's what we're shooting for, and, and I'd like to say, thanks to the DPW crew, because they do a lot of the prep work for the companies to come in and do the chip sealing, and for the, the crack sealing, so thanks to them. And then lastly, on the housing commission, I'd like to ask the group if I can get a couple of dates from you to set up a, a work session with the housing commission, between our commission and the housing commission, much like we did when we were dealing with the airport. So if we could look at a couple of dates here right now, then I can forward those on and see what could possibly work for folks.
If I could, the 15th of October?
That would be ideal, yep, that would be ideal.
Next week?
Yep, that's next week, yeah, that's next Tuesday.
Never come. Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
I can't, on Tuesday, the 15th.
And then the next one, it would be the 29th, if we're doing Tuesdays, which is.
I can do the 15th.
You can do the 15th? Looks like most of us can do the 15th.
I can't do the 29th either, so I won't be in state on Tuesday.
We're going to miss you. If we were able to hold this.
You got a good reason?
Yeah.
What is, what does the next evening and the 16th look like? Is that?
16th?
I can't do 16th.
So there's five of us, six of us that can be.
I'll shoot for the 15th.
We'll keep Roxanne informed.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, I will.
And we'll not get a star for.
I will forward that and get back to the group, and then we'll get that notice, because since it will be a corner move of the city commission, that will be a public meeting. Yes. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, does anybody have comments or questions for the city manager's report? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no, motion is carried, you can receive that report as well. It's come to my attention that, and when we passed those, that series of resolutions for our special assessment of districts, we did not address the number of installments we don't want to use for the alternative payment method. As you recall in the past, I think David mentioned during his presentation, we've typically done either three or five different years, and it's 1% above prime is the required.
We do that now or after when they've been final?
I was thinking we did it after we had final numbers, but apparently, we have to set that now, so, I guess.
So how do, like, if I was to do a motion, I motion?
I would say, the motion should include a, a motion to set the payment schedule for X number of payments for the approved six projects, as either three or five.
Okay, let me, I.
And, and the interest rate would be set in this motion as well, which is 1% above treasury, which today would be 4.85%.
Yeah, okay, so I move to set the payments for these special assessments that we were, that we approved, A through F, for 60-month payment, 1% above prime.
1% above treasury.
Treasury.
Yes.
1% above treasury. Or, did you say six installments?
Sixty, she's sixty.
Five years, is that correct? Five years?
Yes, five years.
Five installments, six months.
Sixty months.
Got that?
Support.
I said support before.
Okay, we're going to have a support office. You hand wrestle?
No, I'm not going to.
And to be clear, there's no, there's no prepayment method, or no, no penalty or anything there for prepayment.
Correct, yeah, you can pay it all initially, if you want to, or if you don't pay, it just goes to the five-year installments and is billed on.
You have five years, you have up to five years.
Up to five years.
Correct. Okay, do you have that?
I believe so.
Okay, is everybody clear?
Yes.
Then no questions. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Was there support, we had support, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Last chance for questions.
Danny, Danny just.
I'm hearing no question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, we have a timeframe then established, thank you, and my apologies that we missed that. Next up appropriations, does anyone have any interest in paying the bills tonight?
Move to pay the appropriations, please.
Okay, we have a motion of support, is there any questions about the list of invoices we're paying? I hear no questions, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, and the bills can be paid. Go for it, Curtis, thank you. Commissioner comments? Lori?
Um, yeah, prayers for Florida. Hope that all stay safe during the horrible hurricane that's about to hit. I had something else I forgot, no?
Is there a play going on?
Yeah, opens this weekend, thank you, I'm sure Roger lives safe, but for, opens this weekend, the comedy, uh, thank you for reminding me, so we'll go and support it. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
To follow Lori's, just keep our thoughts and prayers out to everybody that was affected by the hurricane. Just remember that when you're out, about to be kind, because we do have streets to fix, they're not full of mud, and we have homes to go to, and we have stores to go to. So the next time that people, I'm talking to myself as I'm talking to everybody, that next time you go to complain, just remember that we have streets to work on, and grocery stores to go to, and schools to go to.
Okay, thank you. Roxanne?
I'm sorry, this is the housing commission meeting on the 15th, I try to schedule things around the plan, city meetings, so, and I don't, and thank you, Dave, for all your hard work, I know it's a thankless task, and so I appreciate it, and it's necessary, we need to do it, like I hear all the time on the national news, you know, people don't care until their toilet doesn't flush, or the water doesn't come out of their sink, and so it's necessary and smart that we're doing this when we're fixing the roads, and so I think it's a great idea. I appreciate it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Just thanks, Dave, for all the work, I think I know more about SADs than I would like to admit, but, on the, on the other side of it, too, I've had to replace the sewer main, and I wish we would have did my street before, because it would have been a heck of a lot cheaper, so, but, just a frame of reference for, for some people out there, it's a, it'll increase property value, it'll increase the look and the feel of the street, it's a, it, it goes a long way, and frankly, it's, it's not fun to play it, pay it when you have to, because not only is it higher because of the volume, it's also higher because it's an emergency. It's not fun.
Roger?
My special thanks to Dave and to the people of the city of Alma for passing that special street millage, and look what we have been able to do. We're now planning two years out for major streets, we have six major street projects that we approved tonight. We did, how many streets were, eight streets for chip seal, and 30-some streets in the past couple of months for crack seal, that's going to preserve our streets for a long time. We've got a heck of a lot of good stuff going on, and we're just trying to keep Dave out of trouble. The play, it's called Ripcord, it's, it's amazing, it's a, it's a short play, I think it's inside two hours, it's a fairly small cast, Tinsy Goggan and B L A, Elsie, both play 70-plus-year-old women in a nursing home who are not happy with each other, and it gets quite funny as to, as to what goes on with that, but it's a good play, it's well-written, the actors are fantastic in it, so I suggest you try to see it.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Sarah?
No.
Eric? Just a Fall Festival, October 24th, it's a Thursday evening for two hours, 5 to 7. If it's like last year, we had the Alma College Fraternity Stories come down and do a trunk-or-treat on State Street, and also the Church of God had a trunk-or-treat, plus all the merchants, well, not all of them, a good majority of the merchants got involved with trick-or-treating or had some special activity that evening, so the kids can get dressed up and come down and use their costume one more time, other than just Halloween, so.
Lots of fun.
Lots of fun, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
If I may back up, First Press is planning on having the after Halloween Thanksgiving party. That First Press that we've had in years past.